All right, good evening. We'll call tonight's meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is our first Board of Selectmen meeting under unusual circumstances. It is closed to the public. We have all the members of the board on the phone: Sean Askam, Jackie Bados, Wendy McStudis, Chris Peterson, and Mike Payne. I just wanted to thank them and thank the staff on the phone as well for heeding the advice of health officials and keeping their distance during this time. So, good evening to all of you. We will begin with public audience and doing a little bit differently than we've done in the past. Members of the public have emailed our town clerk ahead of the meeting, and I'll be reading their comments. Anyone who would like to share public comment at a future meeting can send an email to This first comment is from Joan Coe, Board of Selectmen meeting. "On March 9, 2020, the Police Commission convened a meeting to discuss items in executive session pursuant to CGS Section 1-206B (pending claims in litigation) and CGS Section 1-206E[91.82][91.82](attorney-client privilege, communication, trombly arbitration). The minutes reflect that the meeting convened at 7:02, and in attendance were Commissioner Michael Long, Commissioner James Fleming, Commissioner Terry Fogarty, Commissioner Jenna Caulfield, Town Attorney Michael Harrington, Town Attorney Robert DiCrescenzo, and Chief Bolter. There are several inaccuracies in the minutes. Attorney DiCrescenzo did not appear in the room until 7:11 PM when they convened to executive session. The minutes do not reflect the names of the persons in executive session to discuss the trombly arbitration, a violation of the Freedom of Information Act. What information did Town Attorney DiCrescenzo provide on the trombly arbitration? Why was he in executive session for the entire session? What did he provide to the commissioners? Many of the members of the commission have served on public agencies where they were required to adhere to the Freedom of Information Act but continue to violate the law. I would suggest that police commissioners get training on Freedom of Information Act. On March 9, 2020, there was an arbitration hearing on the termination of Sergeant Trombley as a result of a lengthy Internal Affairs investigation, where Chief Bolter initiated the investigation on rumors that Sergeant Trombley recorded Chief Bolter alleging that he wished that several officers should not have been hired and that he wished that they would leave. Chief Bolter did all the interviews with recorded testimony from many officers and then determined that Sergeant Trombley was untruthful, although there was never an admission by Chief Bolter that the rumors were true. Chief Bolter had the role of victim and prosecutor. After the termination of Sergeant Trombley, 80% of the police union voted for a no-confidence vote on Chief Bolter, with concerns that all members of the police union had a target on their back. On March 11, 2020, Board of Selectmen meeting, there was a lengthy discussion on Town Manager Maria Capriola's budget. Board of Selectmen operating budget was presented with an additional wish list under the heading "Service Changes Fiscal Year 2021". These expenditures of 6.69% are above the Board of Finance guidance of a 2.5% increase. It was very disturbing to listen to the Board of Finance allow the Board of Selectmen to add a wish list to the over-expended budget. The Board of Finance has a fiduciary responsibility to bring a budget to the taxpayers that reflects services that are necessary, not add additional wishes to the budget. The largest expenditure was the police budget, where Chief Bolter is asking for a deputy chief at a cost of $183,872 and an additional lieutenant at $5,000. This expenditure does not increase public safety. It adds to administrators that are paper pushers. If Chief Bolter did not use his time having several internal affairs investigations that were inconclusive, he would have time to manage the police department. With the additional activity with the Corona crisis and additional increase in population, the town should add police officers and dispatchers to respond to increased activity, not promote a sergeant to lieutenant and a deputy that would reduce daily activity on the front lines. It's alleged this is a politically motivated change, with the deputy chief already known, and the lieutenant position will allegedly be a childhood friend of Sean Askam. The models used for the change in administration are the towns with large business footprints paying most taxes, where Simsbury is a bedroom community, with all increases in taxes are being paid by the residents. This change in administration will not change the institutional management failures, but only exacerbate it. Since the service improvement priorities is a wish list, all the categories should be eliminated, since we're in uncertain times with the Coronavirus placing extreme financial challenges on the town's budget. I'm very concerned that the Town Manager Maria Capriola has placed a $2 million expenditure for the purchase of the Meadowwood residential property in the capital budget. The Meadowwood project has paid taxes for years and has not been able to sell the land. Why would Town Manager Maria Capriola want to bail them out by reducing revenues and increasing the debt? The Meadowwood project pays over $200,000 a year in taxes. What benefit can be realized in this expenditure? This is a failure in priorities and a failure in the budgeting process and should be rejected. All my comments will be posted on Simsberry Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe, and News Feed on Facebook. This next comment is from Louis and Eleanor Norton. "As one of the senior residents of Mountain Farms, 45-plus years, I heartily support the Mountain Farms Park and open space maintenance. West Simsbury was historically a very large tract of land and one of the biggest sections of our town. Now, West Mountain Road is the only real highway left that keeps and defines what was once a thriving farming area. Still the home of many active children, these two open space areas are assets that should be preserved and developed." Next is from John Gooch pertaining to funding provision of a playscape at West Mountain Farm Park, West Mountain Road, West Simsbury. Though an outlying area of the main town, West Simsbury is richly thriving as a growing young family residential destination, ergo, a healthy and long-term tax revenue base, as well as something of a gem in the Simsbury tableau of culture and desirability. Having lived here with our young daughter since 2011 and enjoyed the amenities of the open-air park on West Mountain Road on a daily, seasonal, and yearly basis, it is heartening to see the cycle of traditional play being taken advantage of by so many families, which continue to make up this growing and significant demographic. No small part is played in the vital resource of playspace, games, sports field, and by virtue of its location, the little ones, playscape adjacent to it. While the current equipment has been much loved, almost over-loved for decades, the inescapable conclusion is that it now needs updating for both longevity, pleasure, and safety. I adlore you to think most positively and long-sightedly as you hopefully favorably consider allocating funds to assist in the renewal of this fabulous, valuable, and culturally enriching resource during your upcoming monetary disbursement meetings. Thank you with enduring gratitude, one very attached and tax-paying family from West Simsbury." Next is from Linda Thompson, also West Simsbury. "I write you as a resident of the Mountain Farms subdivision for over 18 years and the beautification chairperson for the Mountain Farms Homeowners Association for the last 15 years. Based on that, West Mountain Park is very important and near and dear to me, as well as to all of our residents of Mountain Farms and residents of Simsbury in general. The park is perfectly situated for many other Simsbury residents to enjoy the park and playground. As evidenced by the many cars in the parking lot off West Mountain Park, many people drive to West Mountain Park to enjoy the basketball court and the playground. West Mountain Park is a few hundred feet away from the head of the railroad trail off of West Mountain Road. This means that many Simsbury residents from all over can get to West Mountain Park without biking on the roads a lot. Our neighborhood has always had many children and families enjoy the playground and basketball court at West Mountain Park, but the equipment is very outdated and too small for many new residents in town. Currently, we have over 150 children in Mountain Farms alone under the age of 13. Based on the school updating and redistricting, there are hundreds of new families with children in Simsbury. These children deserve a new, updated playground. Many new residents have said they moved to Mountain Farms specifically and Simsbury in general because of the planned open space being part of our town. Mountain Farms subdivision has over 80 acres of open space that was donated to the town by the developer back in the 1960s. Many acres are the current site of West Mountain Park. I understand that there is some money from last year's budget for new, updated playground equipment, but having seen St. Mary's School, Tooten Hills Elementary, the Avon Public Schools, and others replace their playground equipment, it can be very expensive. The Mountain Farms community does its part by keeping the walking paths, also part of the donated open space in the 1960s by the developer, clean and safe. Personally, I'm happy to contribute whatever I can in terms of labor to make the park better. Just last fall, I volunteered my time and effort to cut four dump trucks of debris and vines from tree-lined areas between West Mountain Park and West Mountain Road under the approval from the Town Parks and Rec Department. The space is now open, and the trees will now thrive instead of die. Mountain Farms is asking for volunteer contractors or Eagle Scouts looking for their community project to work with the town's Park and Rec Department to resurface the basketball courts and repaint the basketball court lines. The main playscape should be replaced, and that cost will be expensive. I sincerely hope that the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen will hear my request and vote on the budget favorably to make West Mountain Park the park and playground it is capable of being for all Simsbury residents." Finally, Ellen Torres. "Good afternoon. Sorry for the late timing of this email, but this letter is in support of playground funding and open space tree maintenance funding for Mountain Farms. With two young elementary-age children, we use the trails quite often and love that we can safely get access to the rail trails and can walk, bike, run, and enjoy the outdoors. An upgraded playground would get so much use and would allow us to walk to the park as opposed to driving to one we have to now. And as we got back from a walk on the trails, one of the good things about being forced home right now, I noticed that many dead tree branches were overhead and worried about them falling. While out for a walk, we saw many others doing the same. In short, any additional funding that could be given to support the trails around Mountain Farms and the playground would be greatly appreciated and greatly utilized. Thank you for your consideration." For anyone watching who's aware, that I live in the Mountain Farms neighborhood. I formerly served on the Mountain Farms Homeowners Association. I'm no longer part of that, and I wanted to just say publicly that I had no role in encouraging any of these folks to reach out to the Board of Selectmen, although I encourage all people to reach out to the Board of Selectmen with their priorities around budget season, so I thank them for that.
And there was just that one comment from the chamber that came in late in the day. Did you see that?
Did not.
Okay. It's in your email? Sorry about that.
No worries.
Okay.
This was related to budgetary?
Public comment, yes, yes.
Oh, okay. Nope, my apologies.
No, that's okay. Thank you.
Yeah, let me see if I can stand by.
That's all right. Tom sent an updated PDF file for you.
Oh, did he?
Yes.
You were over five minutes on one of those, so...
I wasn't keeping track.
I was, but you weren't. It's okay.
Did this one come to the town, Maria? I'm sorry.
Yes, yeah. Do you see an email from Tom, six-year-old?
Not.
Take one second.
Oh, wait a minute.
Did you read it?
Breaking news? Um, no.
From this afternoon. Sorry, hang on one moment. Let me see if I can help with that. Just taking a moment.
Eric, I just forwarded it, so hopefully she will...
Oh, thank you. Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
There it is. Thank you.
I'm not getting anything refreshed. If you have it, Maria, I can steal your time.
Yeah, do you feel comfortable, or do you want me just to read it? Or, okay.
I'll go for it.
Okay.
Okay, this is from Simsbury Chamber of Commerce. "Dear Selectmen and women, we're all aware that the current COVID-19 climate has been detrimental to businesses, with many being forced to reduce their hours and services and others being forced to close altogether and indefinitely. Just this morning, Senator Chris Murphy predicted a second-quarter economic contraction of 25%, even with the support given in the form of grants and loans to local businesses. Our chamber has been in constant communication with our members and other local businesses, and we're writing to request the taxes on businesses remain fixed and that an increase not be considered for the 2021 fiscal year. An increase in taxes on local businesses would be viewed as inhospitable and insensitive to our business's current economic situation. A stabilization of current tax rates would aid in helping the businesses recover from the crisis and further stimulate the economy. We appreciate your consideration of our request. Please reach out to us with any questions."
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, we have one presentation tonight, and it's really an update on the COVID-19 situation and the town's response, so I'll turn it over to you, Maria.
Great, thanks, Eric. I thought for this evening it would be best to consolidate my manager's report with this update on our response efforts. "In order to provide me the authority to take actions as necessary to protect public health and mitigate this emergency, including but not limited to committing resources to support emergency response, a declaration of a local state of emergency was issued by the First Selectmen and I on March 16 of 2020. This action was taken pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes, our Town Charter, and our Court of Ordinances of the Town of Simsbury. The declaration is intended to allow Simsbury to be prepared for the possible effects of the pandemic on our community and to address the significant potential danger to public health posed by the spread of COVID-19 and possible shortages of supplies and equipment necessary to protect the public health and safety. The declaration will allow me as Town Manager to take necessary action for the purpose of ensuring civil preparedness and mitigating the effects of this public health emergency situation for the residents of Simsbury. Town and Board of Education staff, along with our local emergency management officials, have been keeping in regular contact with the Farmington Valley Health District regarding COVID-19. As this issue is rapidly evolving, residents are encouraged to visit our simsberry-ct.gov website for up-to-date information regarding cancellation of programs, suspension or modification of services, meeting cancellations, building closures, or changes to our facility schedules. We are requesting that our patrons please refrain from visiting our public buildings at this time. The following facilities were closed to the public as of March 19, last Thursday, until further notice: Town Hall, Eno Memorial Hall, our Simsbury Public Library, and the Simsbury Farms Administration Building. Additionally, we have closed our town basketball courts, our playscapes, our tennis courts, and our paddle tennis courts. Today, the Board of Education did the same. Staff will continue to work in our closed facilities on a limited basis, and we will be operational by phone, mail, email, and virtually through our online services. We have created a brochure that highlights many of our online services. Urgent matters may be addressed by appointment at the discretion of staff. Our highway facilities, sewer, parks, and golf crews will continue to work to provide essential services, but on a modified basis. A secure drop box has been placed at the Town Hall entrance for the public to leave documents for town departments. A similar secure drop box has also been placed at Eno for donations and for the public to leave documents for social services. All nonessential town meetings have been canceled, and our regulatory bodies continue to meet on a limited basis. At this time, meetings of our regulatory bodies are closed to the public, but residents may watch the meetings live on Comcast Channels 96 and 1090, as well as Frontier Channels 6071, and at simsberrytv.org. Residents may submit public comment and writing for those meetings to the Town Clerk's Office at ebutler@simsberry-ct.gov. The Town Manager's Office is coordinating response efforts with the Board of Selectmen, our Health District, our Emergency and Management Officials, our Superintendent, and members of the Leadership Team. I want to emphasize that we have a remarkable group of talented and dedicated officials and employees who are working extremely hard for our community right now to ensure that our essential services remain in place. My office is regularly communicating with members of the Leadership Team to ensure continuity of services to the extent possible. We thank you for your patience with us and understanding as we move forward during these very difficult circumstances. Thank you."
Thank you, Maria. And I'm going to use my First Selectmen's Report tonight to share with you some reflections on the past week, some personal thoughts about the weeks to come, and the ways that you can stay connected to your local government and to each other. I have full confidence in our Town Manager, our Police Chief, Emergency Management Officials, and Social Services Department, that they're doing what needs to be done to keep our community safe and healthy during this time. The steps we're taking to encourage social distancing are evolving on a daily basis. The best way to ensure that you're getting the most current information from the town is to subscribe to News and Announcements, to have town news delivered directly to your email. To subscribe, visit simsberry-ct.gov and click on Subscribe to News on the homepage. The online version that we're sending out has a link to our latest press briefing that we released last Friday. For anyone who wants to see that, you can go to simsberrytv.org, and I believe it's right there on their homepage. You can also follow the town and various departments on Facebook. We maintain different Facebook pages for the town, Public Works, the library, Culture Parks and Rec, and Community and Social Services. And you can just type those into the search bar, and they come up pretty readily. We'll be using our Facebook pages to share information about closures and other news, but we'll also be using these pages in the weeks to come to share ideas about staying connected, informed, and entertained. And that last part is really important in making sure that we're keeping up our mental health during this time. Maria mentioned how you can continue to watch public meetings. These meetings, as she said, are closed to the public. They're available to stream live. They're also archived on simsberrytv.org. And for meetings that include public audience, you can send your comments to ebutler@simsberry-ct.gov, and they'll be read aloud into the record. Closed captioning is also available. Instructions on how to turn closed captioning on can be found on SCTV's Facebook page. I want to thank all members of our community who are heeding the call for social distancing. I realized as I reached for the Town Manager's cellphone, I wasn't following the advice of health officials, and it makes you realize how difficult it is, because some of these things are ingrained. But we need to keep our distance, and that's something that, you know, the Board of Selectmen and staff are modeling tonight. They're staying away, they're joining by phone, and participating fully in that way, and I thank them for doing that. I also want to thank the residents of our community who've reached out, looking for ways to help. Currently, Social Services is collecting supermarket and gas station gift cards and non-perishables. There's a cart in front of Eno Memorial Hall where non-perishables can be left, and a secure lockbox where donations of gift cards can be placed. Social Services also accepts donations by check. If you have any questions or are in need of assistance, please call Social Services at 860-658-3283. I am completely supportive of steps that the town has taken to support social distancing, including the closure of our playgrounds, our courts, and other town facilities. I realize, however, that these places, these are places we are used to turning to for staying active, entertained, and connected. In the weeks to come, we'll be using our communication channels, especially Facebook, to share ideas about how you and your family can stay connected with the larger community. I invite you to follow me on Facebook, facebook.com/EricForCT. I work hard to maintain a page that's informative but also positive and uplifting. Last night, for example, I hosted a Facebook Live conversation with a local author and magician, Brian Miller. Miller has written a book about social connection, and we talked about strategies for maintaining and building relationships during this difficult time. So that's something that I want to continue to do and continue to build on. Lastly, I wanted to share my confidence that we, as a community, are going to get through this. There's no doubt in my mind. I ask that we lead with kindness. At a time when our stress levels are high, let's show an extra dose of patience at the supermarket, with our educators and all that we interact with. Consider brightening someone's day with an email or a phone call. In the weeks to come, I'd like to start documenting some of these acts of kindness that we see around us on my Facebook page and inspire others to build upon them. Let's see if we can be the kindest community in America. We're going to do this together and come out stronger on the other side. That's my First Selectmen's Report. Moving on to anything you were gonna...
I think I covered everything under the preparedness section, so...
Great. Okay, moving on to Selectmen action. Item A is a resolution to extend the budget process timeframes. Governor Lamont issued an executive order, many executive orders over the past week, but among them is the option for local governments to extend their budget adoption timeframe to cope with COVID-19. Maria, is there anything you wanted to add to this item?
Just a bit. So, we do have the ability to extend our budget development process by 30 days, which I do think would be prudent for us to do, given the current circumstances. Over the weekend, we did learn some new information from a new executive order that was issued, and we are prohibited from holding a public hearing that is open to the public at least through April 22. So, for the purposes of our budget public hearing, we can do similar to what we did tonight, and residents will be able to submit their comments to us in writing and have those read into the record. The executive order also said that we cannot hold a referenda during, at least through April 22, but if the executive order is in place longer than that, for the duration of the executive order. If that is to happen, the Board of Selectmen, as the legislative body, could grant the Board of Finance budget-making approval and authority. Under that circumstance, the Board of Finance, once they adopted a budget, they could then set a mill rate. We're hoping that we will not have to take that step. We have been working on what essentially an alternate timeline could look like under the 30-day extension, and we've put that up on the screen and added that to the packet online. So, an alternate scenario for us could be that we are holding a budget referendum on May 30. Again, hopefully at that point in time, we would be able to do so, with the Board of Finance setting a mill rate on June 1. That should also provide sufficient time for us to issue our tax bills to folks in a timely manner. So again, this is a sample of a tentative timeline of what that could look like for us moving forward, with the Board of Finance meeting again on April 7 to continue their discussion of the budget and hopefully referring to a public hearing. That would either be on April 21 or May 7. But again, just wanted to, again, this is developing and evolving. I would say it's subject to change, but this is the newest information we have available as of Saturday evening.
Thank you. I wanted to see if the Board of Selectmen had any questions.
Eric, this is Mike Payne. I think this timeline is reasonable. I would, rather than having to have two different referendums, if possible, to work this in with the primary, I think that would be a good idea, but we have to do what we have to do to keep the town in business.
Sure. Sure, Mike. So, this is Maria. We had that same hope, that we would be able to do that. Legally, we would be able to do so if the polling locations were essentially divided. The unfortunate part is that logistically, we don't have enough equipment to actually administer those two pieces concurrently. So unfortunately, we will have to separate out the primary from the budget referendum.
Okay, well, it was a nice idea.
It was. We had the same hope as well, and we're also working through that yesterday and today, and hoping that we can make that happen. And again, we just unfortunately don't think we'll be able to do so.
I wanted to see if there were any additional questions or thoughts. Is there a motion effective March 23, 2020, to extend the timeframes associated with the fiscal year 2021 budget development process by 30 days pursuant to Executive Order Number 7C issued by Governor Lamont on March 15, 2020?
So moved. This is Sean.
One second. It's like buzzing in for jeopardy.
That's right. Is there any further conversation? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, then it passes unanimously. Item B is tax refund requests. Is there a motion effective March 23, 2020, to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $1,601.16 and authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds?
Mike Payne, so moved.
Jackie Bados, second.
Is there any other conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Item C is the Historic Documents Preservation Grant Program. This is a grant that the town applies for annually. We've got a lot of documents in paper form, and this would allow us to convert many of them to microfilm for security. Is there anything you wanted to add on this item, Maria?
Just to state that this is, again, a program that Erica has been really passionate about, which is our records management program. She's doing really great things with our records and our vaults, and we are eligible for up to $7,500 based on our population. This is, again, an annual grant program, and we're just really excited about the opportunity.
Okay. I wanted to see if there were any questions or conversation from the board.
The only reason, this is Sean, the only reason we're doing it tonight is because this time is specific, right? Otherwise, we would have pushed this off.
Right, so we had a few...
Is the date is sensitive?
Correct, right. We had a few grant application deadlines coming up, and not knowing if public meetings were going to be shut down altogether, we just wanted to make sure that we got these grant applications before the Board of Selectmen. We do have a charter requirement that in order for us to submit grant applications, we do need the board's approval. So again, there were a couple of grants on the agenda tonight for that reason. So again, there were a couple of grants on the agenda tonight for that reason.
Absolutely. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Hey Maria, it's Chris. Yeah, just a quick question. I'm sure Erica would be able to answer, but just pure curiosity and education, how far along are we with the project? It seems like we get this grant every year, and we know that Erica's working diligently with the team, but is there a progress status on getting this converted over?
Sure. I can definitely have her summarize for you. I think that this will be an ongoing process for some time. As you can imagine, some of our land records are hundreds of years old, so it's not only for digitizing records, but we can use them for preserving the existing records that we have that need to remain in paper form. We can use it for assisting with upgrades to the vaults. So I think that this is a project that will be before us for many years to come.
That's cool. I was just curious.
Yeah, it's a great question.
Any other questions? Okay. Is there a motion effective March 23rd, 2020, to submit the fiscal year 2021 Historic Documents Preservation Program grant application and authorize Maria Capriola, Town Manager, to designate Erica Butler, Town Clerk, as the agent for making the above application and further to, in the event that the grant is awarded, to authorize the Town Manager to execute all documents related to the grant award?
So moved. Mike Payne.
Wendy, second.
Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item D is the Local Transportation Capital Improvement Program grant application. These are grants that support local transportation projects, and the one that staff believes best fits the criteria of what they're looking for is the construction of a sidewalk along the western edge of Hot Meadow Street in the North Village. Do you want to provide a little more context on that, Maria?
Sure. So, the location of the proposed sidewalk would essentially be from the intersection of Hot Meadow and Hoskins up to right around where Dorset Crossing is located, right near Woolcut Road. So we think that this would be helpful in terms of connectivity for pedestrians, cyclists, to the amenities, to the trail, that's right there, to our business community, that's right there. So we believe, based on the scoring system, that this project would do particularly well, and we are proposing that we submit the grant application for that project.
Other questions from the board?
I just see that there is an impact to the town of some costs associated with that.
Right, that's correct. So we would be able to use the grant for the construction, which at this time, a very preliminary estimate of the construction is $500,000. That would be funded by the grant. We would be responsible for covering costs associated with engineering and design, and our preliminary estimate for that at this time is $85,000. And if needed, we could utilize our sidewalk fund allocation to help with that.
So is that planned in this year's budget, or is that for next year?
Sure. So we have done...
Where that comes from?
Sure. So we've already done previously two installments of sidewalk funding into the sidewalk fund. So we do have existing funds in that fund if we needed to tap into, to help with the local match.
Okay.
Wendy, this is the part where we approve grants but don't fund them, and then we deal with them later.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious about, we do have some costs on the hook here.
Yeah.
To get the grant.
Yeah, it's a very good question.
You're speaking my language on these.
Yeah, I was just curious, given, so just a question, when would this happen? Like, when does something like this happen, start working?
Sure. Tom or Mike, they are both on the phone. I'm sorry, Tom Roy, because both Tom Tversky and Tom Roy are on the phone. But Tom Roy or Mike, would you mind sharing sort of the timeframe that we'd be looking at for this particular process?
Sure. Maria, this grant is really just kind of putting a placeholder in, in the lots of program, and the lots of program is really through the Capitol Region Council of Governments, the way that they get us federal funding for a number of either roadway or transportation projects. Right now, the trail extension into Terrifield is a lots of funded project from a couple of years ago. So this program is really, they're looking to have applications so that we can be ready for funding that's not even been allocated yet. So we're looking probably three years out at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there other questions? Okay. Is there a motion effective March... I'm sorry, was that you, Chris? Okay. Is there a motion effective March 20... Okay, just remind everyone to go on mute if you're not. Is there a motion effective March 23rd, 2020, to submit an application for the Local Transportation Capital Improvement Program grant for the proposed project of constructing a sidewalk along the western edge of Hot Meadow Street in the North Village and authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute all documents related to the grant program should be rewarded, awarded?
This is Jackie. I'll make a motion.
Mike Payne, I'll second it.
Is there any further conversation? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item E is one that I'm going to recuse myself from.
Tell me that.
No, Sean.
Oh, great.
So, this is Sean. I'll take the chair for a minute here from the phone. It'll become apparent in a minute here why our first selectman needs to recuse himself. All right, he's not up there anymore. I can see him on TV. I can't see him on TV anymore. So as part of the 350th celebration and as part of the opening ceremonies, the Wellman family, both Rachel and Eric graciously agreed to donate a painting, so we need to accept that gift on behalf of the 350th anniversary celebration. Maria, is there any more content behind that?
No, just essentially that we would be looking for a series of motions this evening. The first would be to accept the donation from Rachel and Eric Wellman for the purpose of acquiring the painting. The second would be to authorize me to enter into a donor agreement with the Wellmans. And then third, the third piece of this is that we would then enter into a purchase agreement with the artist, Michael Grady. So it is a bit of a three-step process, but we're excited about the potential acquisition.
Right. And the reason we're doing it this way is because this work has been commissioned, correct, or will be commissioned as a result?
The work has already been completed by the artist, and we would be acquiring it from the artist.
Fair enough. Okay. All right. So I'll look for a motion effective March 23rd, 2020, to accept the donation from Rachel and Eric Wellman with our thanks for the purpose of acquiring the 350th anniversary painting depicting the Pincho Sycamore Tree. I further asked the motion to include the authorization for the Town Manager to execute the proposed donation agreement with Rachel and Eric. Go ahead.
This is Jackie. I'll make a motion with our thanks. I'll second it.
Thank you, Wendy. Is there any other discussion on the matter? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Thank you. All that motion carries unanimously, and I'll need another motion to move effective March 23rd, 2020, to authorize the Town Manager to execute the purchase agreement with Michael Grady, the artist of the 350th anniversary painting depicting the Pincho Sycamore Tree.
Mike Payne, I'll take that motion.
Go ahead, Mike. I'll second it.
Mike Payne, Jackie made the second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? That motion carries as well. Thank you. Would you bring the boss back?
Item F...
Thank you for your donation.
Absolutely. You know, it's a pleasure. The painting's going to be hung in the library in a prominent location, and frankly, it feels a little frivolous to even be talking about this tonight, but we got feedback that it would be helpful from the perspective of the 350th Committee that's looking to make reproductions of the painting to be able to move this forward. So if anyone's watching and wants to know why we're moving it forward tonight, that's the reason.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Item F is Proposed Updates to the Accountant Classification. This was an item that was reviewed at the last meeting of the Personnel Subcommittee. Was there any additional context you wanted to add, Maria?
Sure, just a bit of background. You'll recall that the accountant position had been vacant for quite a period of time, I believe it was over six years. It was approved for a mid-year hire as part of the current budget year, and because the position had not been filled in quite some time, we thought it was prudent to review the job description, update it as appropriate, do a market analysis for an appropriate pay range. We also wanted to ensure that this individual would be working 40 hours a week. The other staff in the accounting office for the finance department do work 40 hours and wanted to ensure that we had consistency there. And so before you, this evening, is a proposed update to the job description, pay grade, and hours of work as a result of that work.
Thank you. Were there any questions from the board on this item?
This is Sean. Just that this is an important item that we've been talking about, and we need this position filled, so appreciate the Town Manager and Amy bringing this forward.
Yep. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Is there a motion effective March 23rd, 2020, to approve the proposed changes to the job description, pay grade, and hours of work for the accountant classification as presented?
This is Sean. So moved.
Mike Payne, second.
Okay. Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. That motion carries. Yeah, thank you. Item G, the last item under Selectment Action, is Discussion of the Budget. I think what I, the way I'm going to propose we facilitate the conversation tonight is give a brief recap of what the Board of Finance is asking us to do, and then we're going to put a scenario on the screen that the board can, I think Amy will be able to walk us through what the scenario says, and then the board can react to that. And it's not to be prescriptive, it's just to give us a starting place to anchor the conversation. So it's obviously a dynamic situation. The Board of Finance has expressed a desire to come in this year with a flat mill rate, and they've asked us to take a good, hard look at our budget that we're recommending. One of the biggest budget drivers this year is reducing the interest rate assumption on our pensions from 6 and 3/4 to 6.5%. My recommendation is that since that is really a decision that's under the purview of the Board of Finance, I'm going to suggest that tonight, we focus on the items that are clearly within our control of recommendation, so we understand how our decisions are raising or lowering or impacting the mill rate. Before Amy puts the starting place on the screen, Sean, I wanted to see if there was anything you'd like to add.
No, Eric, I think that's a good suggestion, and I suspect that the scenarios on the screen will help guide this conversation. The Board of Finance was supportive overall, not unanimously, but in general, of the Deputy Chief and the other funding requests for funding restorations, et cetera. So, but they did ask us to make sure that we sharpen our pencil here, rank our priorities, and reconsider how we're potentially funding some items to help ease the mill rate impact.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead. That'd be great. And folks on the phone, if you have any trouble hearing, please give a shout.
Okay. So I was tasked with what does a flat mill rate look like, given the Board of Finance guidance? So we took a look at, excuse me, what the Board of Selectmen had already approved for service changes, looking at the pension, sorry, and then looking at the capital projects. So this scenario here puts the pension back at no changes in assumptions. So we're back at the 6.75%, no updated mortality tables, no interest rate decrease in the assumptions. We reduced the library materials by $10,000 from $20,000. We took the Parks and Rec tech position and the deputy police chief position and started them at a January 1 start date, so half-year positions. For C and R, we removed $25,000 in playscapes and also the $8,000 in the rink fencing. We have some very generous savings from one of our fencing projects that's happening this year that Tom Tversky said he should be coming in well under budget, so we'll be able to utilize those savings to take care of the playscapes and the rink fencing. The other thing we did was remove the facilities van at $46,000. We think that we can purchase this via year-end savings for fiscal year 20. And then we updated the capital reserve contribution. We put it from $50,000 down to zero. So with all of these changes, that's how we got to a flat mill rate. And obviously, you all can make changes as you go, and we can tweak things, but just to give you a sense of all the changes that we needed to make to get that far down, that's what we did.
Yeah, before we move on, I wanted to see if there were any questions about what Amy reviewed or any clarification that's needed?
I might have missed this, but the four service items, are those included or are those out?
Yeah.
What you just presented.
Go ahead, Amy.
They are out, and they will be paid for with other funds via fiscal year 20 year-end savings or capital project savings that we're aware of. The only one that is out completely that will not be funded via a different source is the capital reserve contribution request for $50,000. Oh, and we took...
To be clear, when you said, oh, Wendy, were you talking about the deputy chief position or were you talking about capital items?
First, I was just, I was talking about the deputy chief item, the four items.
Sorry. Yeah, so the deputy chief and the... Yeah, under this scenario, the deputy chief and the parks position would be hired at mid-year, so there would be some savings in the upcoming budget. It reduces the...
And Eric, I'm sorry, I was going to mention that, Eric, it's Chris, and you mentioned it reduces the library funding from 20 to 10, correct?
Yes.
It does. And again, no one here, I think, is recommending per se that this is what we should do. It's just a starting scenario to say, look, this is an example of what it would take to get to where we need to go.
So I like those at first blush, but here's the challenge. Our arc is going to be even bigger next year, right? Our pension change, based on what just happened, we won't even know what it is for a while. So we're going to have to then eat the other half of these positions next year and deal with the massive arc.
Right.
So I would honestly rather find a way to fund these fully in the fiscal year and look at the rest of the budget and see if we can maybe move some things around or prioritize some things. Because I know in the past, and again, the Board of Finance may do it, but traditionally, not always the best idea for us to go with half positions, especially with what we know is coming next year or what we don't know is coming next year with a potentially even more tumultuous budget season. I can see your face, Maria, like you might have a question.
No, no, just thinking. I mean, you know, another possibility, you know, with the service changes would be to consider perhaps seeking, you know, supplemental appropriation mid-year, since we would be looking for, you know, if we were to go with a 1-1 implementation date, you know, perhaps sometime in the fall, we'd reevaluate our cash flow, you know, whether or not, you know, we're in a worse position in terms of tax collection rates due to, you know, the virus and the impact that it's having on people's ability to pay. I mean, that might be one approach is to, again, consider doing those through some sort of, you know, mid-year supplemental appropriation. If folks felt more comfortable not including them at all at this point in time, that might be one way to approach it.
No, I'm suggesting we leave them in, but I was suggesting we prolong the meeting by finding ways to fully fund them, but just a suggestion. Because one of the Board of Finance members, Lisa, did bring up looking at some of our cash items as a way to potentially lower the item, and there was no support for our $2 million land acquisition project. So moving out the land acquisition and potentially moving some smaller capital items into maybe a smaller number and not using the full 2 million, but perhaps 500... but perhaps 500,000 or a million of that bond capacity for some of the other projects that we remember we're going to pay cash for. Because the thought there in my conversations with the Board of Finance was they did not look favorably upon us using up a bunch of reserves and cash right now, given the uncertainty as well. So long way of saying, are we able to move some of those projects around, get operating budget savings, and use less reserves by utilizing our debt capacity?
Sure. So what might be helpful? Amy put together a revised chart. So you may recall at the Board of Finance meeting, she had presented what I think is a very helpful chart that showed the capital and the CNR projects with a breakdown of the traditional payback method versus cash versus reserves. And so she's prepared a revised chart to show where those changes are. And in doing so, we were also able to potentially reduce what would, what we would be taking out of the reserve as well as freeing up some cash that helped bring us to the flat mill rate. So maybe as a good starting point, we could just have her walk you all through those changes?
Okay, I think that's great.
Great, thank you.
So for, I mean, it's basically the changes that I just went over. We removed the playscapes for the 25,000. We removed the rink fencing for 40,000. And, hmm? Oh, 8,000, I'm lying, 8,000. And then we put the feasibility study in there for the 25,000 to get us to our five-year payback of the 416, 250. And then under the reserves, we removed the compensation study altogether. We removed the utility van. And then, like I said, we had moved the parking feasibility study out of reserves and put it into the CNR payback. And then under the general fund cash, we just took out the capital reserve funding for the $50,000.
Amy, when you say that you removed the playground and the, the van, just to clarify, we would still do those things, but we're paying for them differently?
Right, so those were the ones that, when I went through the initial scenario, that would either be funded via capital project savings or year-end operating savings in fiscal year '20.
Are there questions on the phone?
Well, I wanted to just clarify another thing. The 2.2 item, open space, is that taken out?
Go ahead.
Like requested?
Sure, so that has been removed. Our understanding from the Board of Finance is there was a desire, if we could, to defer voting on that matter, perhaps piggybacking off of the presidential election in November. So we would be able to present to the public and do all of the referrals to the various committees that were needed for that potential acquisition. You may recall, we had intended to do that this evening. But unfortunately, given, again, current exigent circumstances, that presentation of the potential acquisition and the referrals have been pushed out. So I think it's not that necessarily, you know, is the project fully dead? I would say not at this point in time. But there would definitely seem to be a desire to at least push off taking a vote on the matter until the presidential election. And again, piggybacking off of that particular election.
Okay, so I'm trying to look at this in the new light, you know, we met last Tuesday, or it seems like weeks ago already. And, you know, things have changed for all of us. So trying to look at this in the, in the light of what do we really need, you know, going forward in this year that's still unknown, right? So if the 2.2 is out, I heard somewhere we're moving some of these capital projects into bonding, right? Because we're not going to have the 2.2 million bonding project?
Well, to be, to be clear, Wendy, it's something I think we need to talk about.
It's not something that's been done thus far, it's something that you all can choose to do.
Okay. So am I getting ahead of things here? I guess I'm trying to figure out where-
No, you're, you're asking for exactly what I was asking for.
Yeah, so that, okay, so we're sort of moving things around on this capital cash breakdown, purchase breakdown sheet, right? Trying to get more, well, I would say for me, like, which we try to want, we want to have more in reserves, which I think is what Sean said, right? Given the unknown, we want to have available cash. And then if we do remove the 2.2 million purchase, that allows us to move some of these items that are priorities to bonding. Right, correct? And I, and you guys have already pulled out some of these, like the rink fence, the playscapes, the comp study, the utility van. I think you've taken them out permanently?
No, so that's, so when, before we move forward with any recommendation, I want to like physically look at everything that we're recommending so there's no confusion. The, the van and the playscape, and is there anything else in that category? And the rink fencing would be paid for differently because, because of savings from another project and using year-end savings. But we would still do those things. Whereas the, the compensation study, what we're saying right now, we would remove. But again, that's still up for discussion.
Yeah, so let me say this another way, Eric. Right now, I, what we're saying is, what projects do we need to cut? There are 20 projects on here, right? So what are we cutting? What are we deferring? What are we looking for other ways is the highest level, right? And that's what, what Maria and Amy have done and has been presented to us on the chart, to keep showing up on the screen and then disappearing because we don't have a copy at home. Right, the, the updated CNR payback reserves, general fund numbers?
Yes.
There it is. Now you see it, it's back on the TV. So if we all agree, we all, I think what Eric, what you're saying is, we all need to agree, is this still our priorities? Is this still what we want to pay for? Or are there additional projects we can live without? And then we go to work on figuring out how to pay for it and then what are the budgetary impacts?
Right.
Right, Eric?
Yes. Yeah, and I, I think this could be a good time to have a deeper conversation into the pros and cons of using some of that additional space for bonding, assuming we weren't holding the 2.2 million for open space acquisition. I mean, Sean, I, tell me if you disagree, but I, I think that that is the only path to be able to get to the Board of Finance's guidance, keep the interest rate assumptions for the pension, and not make very, very, very painful cuts to, to services and, and our assets. And that's a-
I think that, I think that's right. And what I, what I'd like for us to think about is, so we've got 700,000 coming out of reserves here. I, I think we, as we hone in on this, and 700,000 out of general fund, I think we need to reevaluate those in particular because, again, I think the Board of Finance and the, and personally, I want to maintain as much in reserves right now as possible, given the pension challenges we're probably going to have based on the market and the uncertainty with, with the virus, right?
Yeah.
So I think these projects all make sense. But a, as you said, is there another way to, to fund them? I don't think we should use the entire 2.2 of bond capacity, though. Again, all my personal opinions, folks can, can do what they see.
Yeah, it's Chris here, just funny. Just thought points, excuse me, and some of it mixes Sean's comments and Wendy's. I, I see just a couple, three different things. We started the conversation about mill rate and funding reoccurring service changes, right? And that's what we started. And we moved over to projects, capital, capital investment. So keep in mind, you know, Wendy, the, the enhancements, excuse me, that the, the projects that we're speaking about are essentially one-time investments. At least the truck is, the fencing is, it's not a reoccurring. So the funding methodology around that is, we're debating sort of, I think, two topics at the same time. I'm wondering if, if we are a little bit off course somewhat, guys, because of, if we start opening the conversation with mill rate and the four service enhancements, and then we'll be here to the funding of the, of the independent investments in infrastructure, which are non-recurring. I think it's getting the public a little bit confused. And Sean, I am as well concerned about certainly touching cash and moving reserves right now, not only because of the imminent challenges we're facing as a side, society which could trickle down to our town, but also the zero interest rate environment where we're not going to, for foreseeable future, we're not going to get any of that money back. So how, how much are we willing to, to draw down on our credit, on our credit cards here we have, the million we have? And then, and then are we comfortable having that, whatever the new level is in that fund, be the steady-state fund limit for the foreseeable future? Because it's not going to bounce back unless we redeploy cash from another place, which is just moving cash around to a net, you know, that neutral, negative position.
Agreed. No, and I agree with you. And just to, maybe speed this along or maybe confuse it, but I think we put the shovel projects into bonding. So the paving and drainage for the public works, the sidewalks, and the drainage from the CNR. If you put those three projects into bonds, and the reason I'm suggesting this, Chris, is I think it'll accelerate and get us to the clarity of, of what the overall numbers are going to look like here. So the 125, the 330, and the 200.
You wouldn't want to do the $500,000 for the district network infrastructure to bonds?
Yeah.
Yeah, that as well, put the whole thing, sorry.
All of it?
I forgot about that one.
Okay, just so I don't forget my numbers.
Yeah, so it's basically a million one, million two.
Sean, I'm sorry, did you also say sidewalk?
Go ahead.
Sean-
Say that again?
Did you also say sidewalks as well, or no?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I want to do them, I just, again, put them in the, put them in the bond package.
Okay.
This is Mike Payne. I, I like this idea. I am concerned that next year, if we take too much out of reserves and in fact use our cash to fund projects that are going to be more operating dollars and reoccurring, like the staff changes, we create a bigger mountain next year than we have to climb that hill. And we don't have, it goes into our budget, so it gives the appearance that we're increasing our budget when we're really not. We're really paying for a full year of the staff time. I think both of these positions are needed, that, that's not the issue. I just want to make sure we don't shoot ourselves in the foot.
Amy, are you doing your magic?
Yeah.
She is.
Sorry, it goes from the presentation to Eric looking very sternly at the screen.
It's more that I'm in awe.
I thought it was more studious.
You, you look very engaged. I wasn't making fun of you, sorry.
All right, so this decreases the mill rate, but I kind of need your, we only touched capital thus far, so I need your guidance on what you want for a starting point as far as the operating? What do you want for your pension? And what are your non-negotiables for your service changes?
So put, put the pension back to 6.75.
The pension's at 6.75.
Yep.
And then what do you want us to do?
Hey, I'm not refusing to do it, it's just, I, I think it, the Board of Finance, I, I think they have a decision to make on whether, with everything that's happened, whether they want to do that right now or not, or for the same, do they want to wait until mid-year and address that?
Right.
And did you want to put back all the service changes at full dollar value?
Yeah. Sorry, I just wanted to... And I'm not against it, but I, I would rather show what the full number is. And if we need to pull that lever, then we will, with our eyes wide open, that we understand what happens next year. This is my ninth budget, it never gets easier.
Yeah, so Sean, I'm not against, against that. I just want to articulate what I think is going to happen. That no matter what we do, we're, we're going to, we would be essentially overfunding that position, those positions this year because they're not going to be hired presumably for a number of months. So there would be some salary savings that we would capture. But the next year, we wouldn't have a cliff. Am I thinking about-
Correct, but I mean, traditionally, we, I mean, we, we, we mostly budget, again, there have been a few examples where we, we fully fund a position. But I, I understand the logic of doing it either way.
Okay.
Let's just see what the number is, because I don't-
So with all of those changes, it's a mill rate of 37.12, so it's a decrease of .2 mills or $42.
All those in favor?
Melissa, can you, um-
Aye.
Sorry. Melissa, can you just run through your capital worksheets and double-check my numbers before we finish up at some point?
Yes, I'll do that.
Thanks.
Great, thank you.
And again, to be clear to this board and the public and the Board of Finance, because I'm sure they're watching, we're not turning our nose up at the 6.5. We're showing them our budget side, respecting that we're not trying to use reserves. We're, we're trying to minimize cash from this year. You know, we're helping deal with the, you know, the current situation and, and looking, and I really appreciate Maria and Amy's suggestions on, you know, how do we fund projects in other ways? And the only other question I would have, and I, I know it's a nickel and a dime, but from a perception standpoint, and I can't take credit for this, Board of Finance member asked me about it. Are we still fully funding travel and training and everything for next year, even though that's all up in the air?
Right, we haven't made any additional operating reductions at this point.
That is a good point.
And again, it's not mine, but I promised I would bring it up.
No, again, I think we're looking at July to June of the following year. Obviously, if there are still travel restrictions in place and depending on when certain professional development opportunities come up, it is possible that some could be missed if there are, again, travel restrictions still in place. And if they're not, then of course, staff members can still be able to pursue those if there are not restrictions.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I'm thinking of is, and again, if everything's loaded, basically, I think what you're telling me, everything is loaded in the November through April timeframe anyway, so there's very little in the summer.
Yeah, it's usually, a lot of the travel is fall or spring typically.
Okay. All right, let's just, just do, or can we suggest we just take a look at that, Maria? Again, I know it's a token amount, but I feel like, you know, we should do our due diligence just on that line item, given it was brought up.
And-
We don't need to do it right now, but-
Sure, trying to use what for an assumption in terms of assuming things go on for how long, that maybe July, August, travel isn't permitted? I mean, it's sort of, again, sort of hard to say, right, how long that this could, could go on where there would be travel restrictions? What would be sort of the assumption there?
Another option could be budgeting for it, but classifying it in a, in a different way to reflect the reality of the, the fact that we are likely to have expenses that we didn't foresee and are not going to foresee. And then if the world goes back to normal earlier than anticipated, then those funds could then be used for travel. That's just an idea.
Yeah, that sounds great.
And again, I'm not, I want to be transparent to the public about how we're using that money, but if it doesn't need to be used, you know, by your office for COVID-19 response, then it could be used as it had been originally intended.
So just a, a quick change on here, the reserves. After we took out all those projects, $110,000 would be coming from reserves. So knowing that you all don't want to use reserves, I took that out and I put it into cash. So we can change that back if you want to, but that makes your mill rate 37.21, a decrease of .11 mills or $23 to the median home. So I don't know what your preference is, if you want to use general fund cash or if you want to use the reserves, but that's it both ways.
I'm fine with that, because I, again, I think at this point, again, I don't want to speak for my, my peers here, but I, I think we're all shooting for flat, so.
Agree?
I'd be in agreement with that.
Me too.
It's Mike Payne, I would agree.
And it is Chris, it is, guys, I'm sorry, do it again, just for the, the purpose of the town, purpose of the, the media, the medium of which we're all communicating here. Amy, could you just go straight down again? This assumes what, based upon the, the requests we've had, we've asked for, for service improvements for the outside agency considerations? for the outside agency considerations, the pension and the mortality issue? Please just restate all that. Thank you.
Sure. All right, let me start at the top. So this is your budget that you submitted to the Board of Finance with the following changes. So we changed the pension rate assumption from the 6.625, including the mortality tables. We changed that back to 6.75% with no mortality tables. We still have the library materials at 20,000. We still have the parks and rec tech and the deputy police chief at a full year position. We took out the CNR, we took out the playscapes for 25,000 and the rink fencing for $8,000. That'll be paid for with savings from a capital project that's happening this year in fiscal year 20. We took out the facility van of $46,000 to be used for, to be used at fiscal year 20, year-end savings. We removed the compensation study for $40,000. We took out the capital reserve contribution of $50,000. We, hold on, we moved the drainage of $125,000 to bonding. We moved the public works, facility paving and drainage to bonding for $330,000. We took the sidewalks of $200,000 and moved those to bonding. And then we took the BOE district network infrastructure for $500,000 and moved that to bonding. I think that's it.
So I just want to be clear that the only two things I heard that we had initially said we wanted to do, that we're not going to do, would be the compensation study and the capital reserve contribution.
Right.
Can I, just the parks and rec?
I'm sorry, Chris, would you just, and then, okay, please run through again, what is the net result?
Okay.
Okay, so after all of those, those items have been changed, the mill rate is a decrease from 37.32 mills down to 37.21 mills, a decrease of .11 mills. And the median home impact is a decrease of $23.
Okay. Wendy, did you have a question?
I was just trying to see what we took or we saved in reserves, right? So the drainage, the 125, the 40, I'm looking at the breakdown, the van, 40.
We moved 725 out of reserves.
Well, actually, we, we moved everything out of reserves. So there was a small portion.
Okay, so what we're saying, there's 725 more in reserve just in case, right?
Right.
So based on our original submission, we had 724, 450 coming out of reserves. So we've basically, we've moved that down to?
Zero.
110, right? So we've saved?
Well, we moved that down to 110, but then I moved that to cash.
Yeah, okay, you're right, you're right. So we saved the full 724.
Right, you got it.
Yep. So Wendy, if you remember the other night at the Board of Finance, when they were looking at where the reserve number would be, that's what the reserve number would be. I believe it's roughly 16%, right, Amy?
Yes, so at the end of fiscal year 21, it would be 16% without the change in assumption for the tax collection rate. And then if you were to take into account the amount of money that the tax collection rate does give us, it would be at 17.27%.
I just want to ask, do the professionals in the room have any, any concerns or, how do I want to put it? Anything that you think we should think about relating to this decision to bond for these items?
Sure, so, yeah, I know we've talked quite a bit about debt service. Our debt service payments have been our most significant budget drivers in the last few years and trying to move towards, you know, more of a cash model. So it is just something to consider that even if we do, you know, get a relatively low interest rate, something around one or one and a half percent, we will have some modest costs associated with those interest payments, you know, down the road. And again, when we're looking at some of the longer term, you know, facility projects that most likely will happen with the school projects and the town projects, it's just, you know, that much more that's going to eat into our bonding capacity. It's certainly a way that we can pay for the projects, and I would say that's really a policy decision. I think at the long term, again, we need to continue to really work towards paying for the smaller items in cash, but that would be my advice.
Okay.
But again, I also understand and recognize we're in a little bit of a challenging and unprecedented time in terms of the virus, and if folks do feel more comfortable keeping that fund balance number up over 17% and feel more comfortable, you know, bonding for some of these projects, I mean, that's also perfectly reasonable given the circumstances.
Yeah.
And we can ultimately, we being the town, can ultimately change our mind and end up paying cash for this stuff, right?
Yeah, before it's actually issued, yeah.
Right. So if we get through this, knock on wood, with no financial impact, the markets rebound, everybody gets back to work, we can turn around and take that $1 million or roughly almost $1 million we just saved and pay cash for it.
Yes, you can deauthorize the bonds at any time.
Right. Not suggesting we're going to do that here, but we haven't sunk ourselves from a flexibility. And again, I know it's not the same thing, and I agree with you, Maria, we do need to get back to cash and stop bonding things. But additionally, we did just save $1 million in debt capacity by, at this point at least, not pushing the open space projects or?
Right, that's correct.
So not the full amount, but.
Yeah. So I wanted to open it up for further conversation now that folks have had a few minutes to digest this proposal. Are there concerns, thoughts, support?
Hey, it's Chris. Oh, go ahead, Jackie, I've spoken enough, you go ahead.
I just want to say that I'm in favor of this. I think having those reserves is very important at this moment, and this is a fluid situation. So I think that what we're doing is the smartest thing at the moment.
Okay, thanks, Jackie. Chris?
This is.
I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead, Mike.
I would agree. I think this is, to say it's a fluid situation is an understatement. Two weeks ago, we never would have thought we'd be where we are today. And I think this gives us a lot of flexibility if we decide we want to shift in the middle and bond some things and pay cash for it. What we need to bond is because things go awry, we've done our due diligence, and it's, from my perspective, pretty conservative and gives us as much flexibility as I think we can get. So I think it's a good thing.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Anybody else?
Hey, this is Chris, if I can just step in?
Sure.
Just to tip of the wrench here, only the visual wrench in that I'm full supporter of all the work. I would move forward with this with my colleagues. I would like to see that for the exercise so that we did it for the public. My, and it is a concern, I should say, it's not just for the public. But again, I'm not going to step back from moving forward with my colleagues here, considering where we are in this world. But we started with the edict of no mill rate move. Now we've actually reduced the mill rate, which is, I think, a yeoman's effort, certainly in light of where we are in the world today, a good thing to help our citizens. But we also started last week with a budget that didn't move with the 6.5 pension consideration. So we all agreed that we wanted to move off of six and three quarters, that we needed to start addressing that, that elephant in the room, that's just, is not the right place to be. There's not a person out there who would support us, I think professionally, you're being at that aggressive of a level. So we moved to 6.5. There wasn't unanimous decision around that or consensus around that or even any kind of consensus. So we moved back up to six and two-thirds, which kind of got everybody in their right frame of mind. So long-winded, I'd like to see if doing everything we have, but we should add the six and two-thirds because it's not, it's not a possibility. It's an absolute that we have to do. So whether we do today or next year, somebody's going to have to bear this at some time. So I think we should at least look at it so we would know what that would do to the rate and our town people can know that at least we looked at it from optics to understand the impact. Thank you, guys.
So you kind of broke up a little bit.
Chris? Could you, just if you, if you want to look at that, are you going to also want to look at the mortality table?
They're a package deal.
Okay.
Yeah, that's correct.
So guys, just to be clear, and Chris, I agree with everything you said, and we can look at it, but honestly, it's not our decision. The Board of Finance has signaled at least that they wanted to go to 65. I know that at least some members are reconsidering the timing of that right now, and we could spend an hour here going back and forth, and honestly, I don't know what direction they're going to go in. And again, I'm not, when we pass this, if we do pass it, I'm not by any means saying I don't think we should go to 65. I'm saying this is what the town wants to fund from an operating standpoint, and we fully recognize that there's an impact of going from 675 to 65. But here are the priorities of the town, and we'll leave it to the Board of Finance's decision of how and when they want to implement the 65.
Clarity there, I'm not looking to debate anything further whatsoever. Again, my preference, my, I preface by saying it's optics because, again, the, I love the Board of Finance, love the people on there, some are great personal friends, but I don't think as many people watch the BOF meetings as they watch this one. So this is actually letting people see ahead of time what potentially could be the true because I think they're going to hear one meeting's impact on the mill rate and then potentially another one comes down the road. Again, it's just optics ahead of time so people can start preparing to see it versus it being somewhat confusing because, right, that decision's out of our hands, but it is somewhat in our hands here to at least show them.
Fair point.
Yeah. So I'm sorry if I'm not following along, Amy. Are you preparing that view now? Okay, perfect. Yeah, I think that's fair.
Okay, with the pension interest rate assumption at 6.625 and the updated mortality tables, it's an increase to the mill rate of .21 mills. So it goes from 37.32 mills to 37.53 mills and an increase to the median home of $46.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And I'm sorry, would this be going to the 65 or the?
6625.
Okay, okay. Was there another view that anyone wanted to see right now? So there is a couple of ways we can proceed. The Board of Finance doesn't actually meet until after our next meeting on April 6th. So we could, we could vote on these recommendations and forward them to the Board of Finance. We could then come back next week and the world may be different and we would see, you know, we could potentially give them a new perspective. I guess what I'm trying to say is that we can vote tonight, but we don't have to. It doesn't slow any part of the process down. I wanted to see what people are feeling.
Just to be clear, there's no Board of Finance meeting tomorrow night?
No.
No.
Why did we talk about last week like there was going to be one then?
Sure, so, right, the Board of Finance was thinking that they would like to have a special meeting tomorrow. We spoke, myself and the superintendent and Amy spoke with the Chair of Board of Finance and again, talked about timing, you know, again, just to be candid workload right now for both the Board of Finance and the town in responding to the virus appropriately. And if there was, you know, an absolute need to meet tomorrow night or if we could simply do it for their next regularly scheduled meeting. So their next regularly scheduled meeting is April 7th versus having the special meeting that we would have had to pull together for tomorrow night. And they were very gracious and said that they could hold off and wait until their next regularly scheduled meeting.
Absolutely, I wasn't, sorry, I wasn't pushing back on that. I had it in my brain that the meeting was tomorrow.
That's all right, yeah, no, it was.
And I'm going back to the, going back to the timeline we approved, and there it is, yeah. Sorry.
That's okay.
No.
Good question.
So what are folks' thoughts on wanting to sit on this till our next meeting, knowing that it won't slow down the process or moving forward with the recommendation?
Honestly, I think we've got convinced at this point, Eric, I'd like to pass it so the town staff doesn't have to come back and do this exercise with again when we all change our mind in 24 hours.
Okay, well, anybody else?
Chris feels the same way.
I'd be in favor of voting tonight.
Okay.
Okay, before you all vote?
I would support that also.
Can I, can I ask Melissa to double check my numbers?
Hold on, two things. Jackie, go ahead, what were you going to say? Or I'm sorry, Wendy?
No, that was Wendy.
That was Wendy. I was, of course, I was going to say, let's wait on the two weeks if it's not going to make a difference. And of course, I'm just thinking if another shoe drops somewhere along the line, but I like where we are today.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, Wendy, to that point, I don't think there's anything stopping us in two weeks from going through another version of this exercise if things change dramatically, that would change our thinking.
It does, and the other reason I suggest it is because the Board of Finance has line item authority and generally they exercise it within, with consultation with us, so this is not necessarily the last time. I'm just, I'm trying to consolidate it to Maria's point down to one spot.
Yep. Okay, no, that's good.
Okay, and Amy, you were going to?
Yeah, I just need my capital checker, Melissa, to take a look at her capital sheets and make sure that our numbers match.
Yeah, it looks good to me, Amy.
Okay, thanks.
Good job.
Okay.
All right.
Is there anything you wanted to add, Amy, or should we move forward the motion?
No, you guys are all set.
Okay. Is there a motion to recommend the following changes to our budget that Amy described leading to a mill rate?
Sorry, did you want, without the 662?
Yeah, I just want to, I want to be clear on what we're.
Whatever they want. Do you want the 6625?
I think, was there consensus to do it without the 662?
I think, I think we were going to do it without the 6625, and if I'm wrong, correct me on that.
Right.
Okay. I just want to put up there.
And I fully expect the Board of Finance, I fully expect the Board of Finance to round and put whatever money is left over into the capital reserve fund, but that's just me.
No problem. So for transparency and to make sure we're on the same page, for anyone just tuning in, I'm just going to ask Amy to recap what we're voting on and then, and then I'll see if there's a motion.
Okay, so you all are voting on your budget that you presented to the Board of Finance with all the service changes. And then from there on, you had a pension interest rate assumption at 6.625 with the updated mortality tables. This revised scenario puts the pension back to 6.75% interest rate assumption with no updated mortality tables. It leaves your library materials at $20,000. It leaves your parks and rec technician and your deputy police, deputy police chief, oh my goodness, at full year positions. It takes out for CNR projects, the playscapes at $25,000, your rink fencing at $8,000. Those are going to be funded with capital project savings from a project that's happening in fiscal year 20. You're removing the facilities van CNR for $46,000, which will be funded with fiscal year 20 year-end savings. And then you are removing the compensation study for $40,000. Lastly, you are removing the capital reserve contribution of $50,000. And then on to the use of. And then on to the use of reserves for bonding, we moved the drainage project of $125,000 from the use of reserves to bonding. We moved the public works facility paving and drainage for $330,000 from general fund cash to bonding. We moved the sidewalks of $200,000 from general fund cash to bonding. And then we used, we utilized the BOE district network infrastructure of $500,000 with a combination of reserves and general fund cash to full bonding for the $500,000. And then we, the remaining reserves of $110,000, 450, we took out of reserves and we utilized general fund cash. I think that's it. So then your overall mil rate is a decrease from 37.32 mils to 37.21 mils, a decrease of .11 mils and a decrease to the median home taxpayer of $23.
Okay. And anybody watching at home, we anticipate that these numbers may change before the budget goes to public hearing and before it goes to referendum. Is there a motion to recommend those changes to the Board of Finance?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Who was that on, I'm sorry. Who seconded it? I heard a female voice. Jackie, thank you. Is there any further conversation? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Is there anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Okay.
Nice job, everyone.
Thank you.
Well done.
Appointments and resignations. Is there a motion retroactive to March 16th, 2020 to accept the resignation of Chris Tranberg as a regular member of the Library Board of Trustees?
So moved with our tanks.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. The review of the minutes, we had a regular meeting on March 9th and then a special meeting on March 11th. Are there any changes anyone wants to suggest to the minutes? Okay. Are there any selectmen liaison or subcommittee reports?
Just a quick one on public safety. We had a meeting this prior Thursday and we're going to meet again this coming Thursday just to keep that line of communication open for no other reason than to just facilitate and continue to facilitate collaboration, the town staff and professionals, police, fire, ambulance, public works, education, everyone has done an outstanding job through this, this current pandemic. But we're going to keep that meeting on the calendar to have a check-in.
I want to say that I watched you guys and I thought it was a really well-run meeting and very informational, see what's going on and how well the departments are working together, so.
Yeah, thank you, Wendy. We're very lucky with Maria and the rest of town staff. We've got, got a lot of good people steering us through this, so I feel pretty good about where we're at.
Thank you.
Yeah. Likewise.
I would agree. The residents should be very comfortable. We got good folks.
Agreed.
Thank you. Any other subcommittee or liaison reports?
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay. And the meeting that Sean referenced can be viewed right here on SCTV. Okay, excellent. And archived at SimsburyTV.org. Anything under communication? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Stay well.
Thanks, guys.
Be safe, folks.